Welcome to the August 26th Township Board Meeting. First on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, I have a couple of deletions to the agenda. The first one is, I would like to delete action item number one. It's the Metro Consulting Associates Contract.
Second?
The history on this is, this is from the airport and our airport manager is not ready to move forward with this. So I just ask this be deleted. Any questions or concerns? With none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, so delete number one. Okay.
I move to delete action item number two, Purchase Agreement McComb Street Property.
Second?
Oop, we got a couple of seconds there.
Whoever.
A couple of reasons for the, oh, I'm sorry, Jameson. Do you want to give history? I have a couple of things.
Yeah, I mean, we're just, we don't have everything together for it yet.
Yeah, and I also asked, this is good news. I also asked Zaid. Apparently, we have four funding mechanisms for the equipment. If we purchase the land for the playscape, which what we intend to do, and if that goes through, I didn't realize we have four funding mechanisms. So I asked him just to get those for us, just to confirm them, which is very good news for that. So anyway, we'll do that next meeting. Okay, so delete Purchase Agreement. I apologize. Anybody else have a comment?
Not this time, no.
Not this time? Okay. Number two, Delete Purchase Agreement from McComb Property. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Number two is deleted. Okay. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is approved as amended. Okay, we're going to do presentations now. We have a swearing in, a young man, Doug. That's two of you, not just Doug. That's.
Swearing in Doug for another 30 years.
Yeah.
Swearing in again, that'd be great.
Wait a minute.
Say that again.
Can we vote on that?
No.
Okay.
Thanks for letting us have this opportunity to swear in one of our newer officers. So this is, I'm going to give you a little background before we do the swearing in. But this is John Ames. This is first aid today. A little bit of background on him, he went to a local high school down river. He got his bachelor in criminal justice. He also went to the Wayne County Regional Police Academy and graduated in '21. And he has four years' experience within our city. So, and he came highly recommended from that PD and other neighboring communities. So we're very fortunate to have him. And we're also here to swear him in today in front of you guys and let the community see their new police officer.
All right. Thank you, Doug. How do you want to do this, Mr. Clerk?
I'll just come up and we'll knock it out.
All right.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I.
And that I.
Will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of patrolman.
Of patrolman.
In and for the township.
In and for the township.
Of Groseal.
Of Groseal.
County of Wayne.
County of Wayne.
And state of Michigan.
And state of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
All right, welcome to the team, Patrolman.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Pen, there we go.
Use a nice pen, this one's.
Jelton.
If you want to come up, if you want to come up here, no?
And then we're presenting him with this, he'll be badge number 19 for these two, these are his two badges. We're presenting them with the badges. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let me get a picture of that real quick, too.
Do you want to get a picture with the book, maybe you and your family? It's like 80 years old.
You want the picture, man?
We'll take it, we can take it to another room. For accreditation. We'll take it with us if you don't mind and we can do it in the other room.
Sure, just don't destroy it or lose it.
You better sign, Doug, you better sign for it.
Sign out, is there a sign out sheet?
Make sure it gets back into the bibliography with the Dewey Dens.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. All right, very good. Second presentation of the night, Community Challenge and Invitation, Sporting Our Shared Refuge. Roberta, and sir, do you want to come up or how do you want to do this?
I'll speak up there. My name's Edward Smith.
Edward? Okay, Edward, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Township Supervisor Porcelli.
That's not the second part, won't come down. He can knock that one out.
Oh.
We'll do that just a little bit.
Okay, that's good, good. Anyway, good evening Supervisor Porcelli, board members, staff, and neighbors, and friends. My name is Roberta Urbani. I live on East River. I've been a Groseal resident for 16 years. I am the Secretary of the International Wildlife Refuge Alliance. And I'd like to introduce my colleague, Edward Smith, who is also on the board of the Refuge Alliance. And he's the former supervisor of Brownstown Township and knows many people in that regard. So thank you for this opportunity. So I'd like to start with a little bit of history about the refuge. Sometime around 1998, rumors started circulating that a private company was planning on buying the last mile of undeveloped natural shoreline on the US side of the Detroit River. And they were going to develop it and a nearby island into condominiums, a golf course, and all the accoutrements of suburbia, to the detriment, destruction, and obliteration of the natural environment and the wildlife that had existed there since time immemorial, including the last stand of Old Grove Forest. The rumors were true. And a small band of committed citizens started organizing to save Humbug Marsh. And they were successful. In 2000, Congressman Dingell and leaders from Canada and the US got together to create a vision for the Detroit River and the future of the river and the surroundings. In March of 2001, he introduced a bill to establish the Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge. President George W. Bush signed the bill into law on December 21st, 2001. As the idea of the refuge grew, the International Wildlife Refuge Alliance was formed in 2005. It is the official nonprofit friends group that supports the refuge through fundraising, community engagement, and advocacy. We're very proud of the work that the refuge staff has continued to provide to the community, despite months of budget delays, staffing, policy changes, and just all the challenges that they've been facing. They've been busy with habitat and trail restoration, educational recreational programming, and maintaining the visitor center and its unparalleled fishing pier. It's IRA's mission to support this work and continuing advocating for the refuge to keep this local conservation and recreational resource protected and open for all to enjoy. So what is Groseal's connection to the refuge? All of Groseal is within the borders of the Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge. And Groseal contains 83 acres in three separate units. You can see this as page 11 of the Guide to the Natural Areas of Groseal. And indicates Caff Island, which is an 11-acre island included in the refuge in 2002. And hunting access is the only public access allowed. The Gibraltar Bay Unit is a 42-acre site. Everybody probably knows that that was the Nike missile site during the Cold War. It was obviously run by the Department of Defense, turned over to the Environmental Protection Agency, and stewarded by the Groseal Nature and Land Conservancy, until it became part of the Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge. Right now, the Conservancy and the Fish and Wildlife Service offer educational programs to the public at that site, which connects to the township property, the Airport Natural Area. The site includes a pond and a variety of habitats and trails. Then Sugar Island, which notoriously was known as a party island for many years, was purchased for the refuge in 2012. The West Beach is open to the public from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and seasonal hunting is allowed there. So now I'd like to talk about our benefit dinner. You are all invited. It's our 19th Annual Benefit Fundraising Dinner for 30, on Thursday, September 25th, 5:30 to 9:00 PM. And the location is the Silver Shores Waterfront Banquet Center in Wyandotte. If anyone's been there, that you know that they have renovated that site to be a beautiful venue. This is our largest and most important fundraiser of the year. And the benefit dinner is a chance for the community to help us ensure that refuge support is lasting and impactful. Groseal's support is essential. There's some highlights from, pictures from the past.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Just before you go further on, where can you get tickets or how do you do that for something like this? Where do you purchase them or?
Well, I gave everybody an invitation. You can fill that out and mail it in with a check. You can contact me.
I mean, where do we get the, you said we got mailed an invitation?
It might have been sitting on the counter for you.
That little.
Oh, I didn't open this yet until.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the invitation.
I got you, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
I just want to make sure because I want to get a couple.
Great, excellent, excellent.
Okay.
Anyway, I mean, this is kind of what we feature, dinner, dessert, live and silent auctions, games of chance, yearly update of the refuge, and our new strategic plan. You know, we're hoping to sell out all 400 seats and get sponsorships. We're hoping to raise $75,000 and just engage new people. We have that, that group that rallied in 2000, 2001 to establish the refuge. We like to get those folks as well as newer people to be aware of and supportive of the refuge. So this is the challenge part. We respectfully challenge all you folks, as well as our neighbors here, to let it be known that Groseal Township stands with the refuge. And for a little fun competition, we'll be keeping a spreadsheet of attendees to track community representation. And we'll publish the numbers in the October IRA electronic newsletter. Little more verbiage here, you know, your presence there will demonstrate leadership and commitment to conservation, to inspire your community, reinforce regional collaboration across all the communities that border the refuge, and to secure its future. And this is kind of more details about how to participate. So that, that website, that's the IWRalliance.org is the alliance website. You can get a ticket through there. You can call Nicole, our executive director, or email her at that email address. That's, this is my information. My home number is 734-671-0125. My email is bertdetroitriver@gmail.com. And since I have your attention, if you will indulge me a little bit longer just to save these dates. I wear many hats. I'm on the Open Space Committee, and I wanted to remind all of our neighbors about September 6th, on Saturday, is our only 2025 Dump the Junk, Find a Treasure event. You know, at the DPS from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That same day, the refuge is offering a program on Birds of Prey at the Visitor Center from 1:30, that's not AM, that's a typo there, that's PM.
You guys stay out late there.
Yeah, yeah. You can see the owls then. Of course, Thursday, September 25th is the benefit dinner. And then I'm also on the Groseal Nature and Land Conservancy Education Committee. So I wanted you to know about this Mushroom ID Walk at Meridian Woods on Saturday, September 27th, from 1:00 to 2:30 PM. So thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you, and I hope to see you at all those events.
Thank you, Roberta. Mr. Smith, you're up.
It's indeed my pleasure to be here to speak to you, Mr. Mayor and the board. As Roberta mentioned, I'm the former supervisor of Brownstown Township. When I left that position, I was approached by the International Wildlife Refuge, as well as the DCC and the Chamber. And I was happy to help. And I took a look at the International Wildlife Refuge while they were looking at me. And I was thoroughly impressed by the girth of knowledge that so many people there had and knowledge that I didn't have about our, about our environs. Now, while I was a supervisor, I went to Montreal to visit and learn about our Great Lakes with that group. And Brownstown has 20 miles of the Great Lakes. And the Great Lakes is 21% of the world's fresh water. So what happens on the Huron River, the Detroit River, or Texas Hall? We have a wonderful resource in this refuge. Just with a raise of hands, how many people have actually visited there? Okay, well, quite a few of you. I, congratulations. I'm actually surprised because most of the time, when I speak to people, they don't even know where it's at. You know? And, and it is a refuge. It's a refuge for migratory birds, for, for fish, and for insects. You know, so it's easy to pass over this and think it's not important. I'm also a Rotarian. And we went to a meeting in Windsor, and I got acquainted with the monarch butterfly. And I was blown away by pollinators. I'll tell you, I had a colleague, I'm also a financial advisor, a colleague, a friend of mine. And I said, you know, without pollinators, we're not, we won't be here. And he said, well, Eddie, you know, we can eat beef. And I said, okay, I like you, I've known you for a number of years. And I'm not going to tell anybody you said that. But I want you to think about what cattle eat, okay? So, so yeah, it's, it is extremely important. I was down there the other day, and our director showed me some milkweed and very, very small caterpillars underneath strategically placed underneath the leaves where birds can't get them. But this is part of our culture. I've always felt that Downriver was one, one group. And whatever I tried to do in Brownstown, I wanted to benefit all of us because we have an identity as Downriver, okay? So if we get something good there, we'll get something good going on here. I believe in giving back. I believe it's not about me, it's about we. And this is definitely a part of that. When I speak about culture, what, what am I talking about? Well, I'm also involved with the Point Mulee Waterfall Festival. And I'm friends with the Detroit River, we work with them. I'm not a hunter. Never been a honey. I love fishing, I love the walleye that we have there. I want to see that continue. I want to see the tourism continue, I want to see the recreation continue. But when I go down to Point Mulee and I see grandparents and parents bring their kids to that, I want to see that continue. I think it's important. This refuge is important. Because we want to pass that on and explain to generations coming up how important this is to see the cranes going overhead. And to see this area where you can actually go, it's not just a refuge for the animals, but it's a refuge for us also, in a respite, and a wonderful place to visit. I want to thank you so much for your time. I'm going to be speaking to the Downriver Community Conference, to all the mayors and supervisors, and hoping to get a group of us together that will be proud to show our interest in keeping this valuable resource there. Thank you again, and it's good to see all my friends here.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And Mr. Banny, thank you very much, it was very informative. And if others want to, if others want to get tickets, go to the.
You can actually get them on the website.
I was just going to say, you can go to the website.
Yes.
And you can go from there and give them your credit card and get them, order them from there. Very good.
Yeah.
Very informative, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next is, we're going to have a presentation. Teresa McLaughlin is our Finance Director. And she's going to talk about the raises for the board. Is that what this?
I'm sorry?
Joking, big bad joke.
That's what she's talking about, yes.
She'll be talking about ClearGov, a product that we have here coming into the township.
So this is the official introduction to our new ClearGov budgeting software. This is not going to be in our presentation. It's going to be a brief overview because this is going to be, it's a process of getting to our budget season to really dive deep into this and use the product. But this week, I am doing a presentation for the board. On Wednesday, all the department heads and some of the secretaries are getting together for me to do a presentation with them. And then I have a follow-up meeting already scheduled with ClearGov because I'm sure there's going to be questions that I'm not necessarily going to have the answers to right now. So watch the mouse very carefully on your screen. Because I, I tried, the pointers I had didn't, didn't work. So I'm going to try and not go too fast, but try and give you a good overview of what things are going to look like during this next budget season. So there's actually three parts, three sections that we have purchased so far. One of them is, they do have a transparency page. That's included our operational budgeting. And then once we put all the budgeting together, we're going to have a budgeting book. So the transparency page, once I release the URL for this transparency page, this is what everybody's going to see. It has, main page has some demographic information. This is based on the American Community Survey, which is connected to the US Census Bureau. So this, the population figure of 10,603, for example, is actually based on 2023. So you can see from the last official census, it dropped a little bit. 2023 at this time is the most current information that they have available. So you have the overview page, and then you have a revenue page. So right now, we also have Munetrix as a source for transparency, which is required by the state of, state of Michigan. Where this, Munetrix has its, its unique indicators and the things that it does and the comparisons that it does. With ClearGov, when you get to the revenue and the expenditures, you can look at any fund. Munetrix focuses on the general fund and how it compares. So you can, so the sections, you have, there's a revenue section and an expenditure section. And then we have 2026 going all the way back to 2020. So if you go back to 2025, and you go down to the fund, you can pick any fund. So if I take the Bike Path Fund, 2025, the total budgeted was 426,000. The total collected was 129,000. It also shows the per capita per year. So based on that census of 10,603, it's $10 per person. So you can, you can, anyone can look at this with any fund. If you go to the expenditures, there is an option that will pop up instead of per capita. You can put in, residents can put in their property tax bill and see what the cost is based on their property taxes.
That was nice.
So this will always pop up. So I'm not going to do that right now. So going back to 2025 and the Bike Path Fund, we, budget was 426, we spent 12,000. You can go back to 2024, all the way back to 2020, and look at the information. There is an option. And then you can also download financials and do a summary and get an Excel schedule as well. The only thing I'm working on with ClearGov is when this report prints out, it prints the expenditures first. Nothing in the accounting will put expenditures first. Not my, pretty sure why they do, but they are trying to work at switching that. Plus, there's always going to be more expenditure lines than revenue lines. And the revenue kind of gets lost, especially in the general fund when your expenditures are first. So right now, it's, I can see it, but no one else can because it's turned off for the public, even when I open this, until we get this, get this resolved. There's also some additional demographics. So going back. So then for the operational budgeting, I'm going to switch so that. Okay. So everyone's going to see this first page. So it does say the budget year is 2027 because that's going to be the first year that we do a budget in, in ClearGov, is the 26, 27 year. It also says that, that it's closed. It's closed because I haven't opened it yet. I want to make sure everyone gets this additional exposure and training before I open it up. So you, you can't, you can't put any numbers in, but I'm going to show you where you can put numbers. So to access that, you click on the Township of Groseal. And there's a main page. And on this dashboard, what it does is it shows the most recent year end. These are all of our fund balances. It shows the fiscal year 26 projected. I think this says expense first. The expenses are first here, and then the revenue is second. And then our projected fund balance. It, and it shows a summary of the 2027, what we're going to forecast. It, and it shows a summary of the 2027, what we're going to forecast. And then I set up one column at this point for, it doesn't show, it just goes to 2027 on the summary page. When you go to the next tab at the top, you get the worksheet, which is where you're going to do all the work. So you can see on this screen, there's, there's a lot of stuff at the top that's taking up a lot, a lot of space on that and you really can't work with it. So you're going to, there's a button that says maximize. So it, it gives you more space on the screen to work with. Up at the top, when you log in, you want to make sure, and you should have it because I set it up in the defaults. You want to have the, have it sorted by fund, by account type, and then by department. So then it'll look like it's in the order of what BSNA is as far as our account numbers. So when you use the carrots for the general fund, it goes, breaks down to revenue and expense. If you go to the revenue, you see all the departments under revenue for the general fund. If you go under general, that's when you start seeing the accounts. Same thing for expense. So Township Board, there's all the budget items for the department, for the, the board trustees. Let me pick a smaller one. So the nice thing about how this is set up is, so you can see up here in the upper right, there's a lot of information on here because right now I have a lot of columns picked that's going to automatically come up. It's going to go all the way back to 2021 so that everyone can see five years of history, which is normally what they would be working with when they do their budget. So if we move over here. And let's pick... I'm going to go Bike Path, there it goes. So if you were looking at, at Bike Path. So for the Bike Path Fund, the original budget, the net is zero because our revenues equaled our expenditures in our original budget. Our total revenue in the budget was 585,143, and we budgeted expense of 585,143. That's the department in the revenue, and then you get to the numbers. So right now, when, when you log in, you wouldn't be able to see these boxes that you can change the numbers in until I open it up. So if you change a number, if you change a number here, it automatically changes what the total is in the generals, department, in the total revenue, and what your impact is on the bottom line. So if I changed... So on the Bike Path Fund, these are the expenses. If I change the maintenance to 485,000, then the Bike Path Fund would have... Let's change, do that one incident. It changed the total so that you can see. Changing that one number by 10, by $8,000 now shows that we're budgeting an increase in fund balance. We're budgeting excess expenditures by $8,000 by changing that one number. So you can see right away what changes are going to happen, which is very important, especially in the general fund where, where there are a lot of different departments. So all of the department managers are responsible for their budgets. So they have editing capabilities. The board is assigned review capabilities, which in talking to the person that I work with at ClearGov, that's the common setup as far as how the, how the access is. Because the, ultimately, the department heads are responsible. So the department heads are responsible for their own budgets, so they'll, they have editing capabilities. The, the board, everyone has access to everything. But it's a review access only. You can't, you can't change numbers. You should be communicating with the, with your department head and working with them.
I think he missed that one. No, you can only, hold on one second, Bill. You can only see it if you're a Township Board member. But if you're a manager, you can change issues.
Right. Once I open it up.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah. Yep.
Yes.
Also, when you're working on this, there's, there's a lot of numbers and the screens aren't, aren't the biggest either. There is the option to export to an Excel file. And then you have, this is all the general fund accounts and, and the different years. So you can, some department managers might want to work with an Excel schedule and then put the numbers in. So once I get through with the, the, the training, I'll open, we'll open it up and they can start looking at different things. And also, if you go back to the main page, depending on any, everyone's role, if you go down to the ClearGov Academy, then there's, there's training modules. So originally, I had like 19 of them to go through. And now they've added some more based on where we're at in the, in the training process. So my understanding is that everybody has those depending on what their role is. So you probably don't have 19, but you probably have a few when you log, when you log in. Any questions so far?
Yeah, I do have a quick question. So when the managers go through and they decide to change numbers midway through, the, you know, for projections or whatever the case may be, they go and they change their side of the budget. That's going to come in front of us to approve before it actually gets posted out to the public, is that correct?
Correct. Nothing will, nothing will get posted to BSNA and our official accounting records until the, the board approves it. So, so when we go through and work on 2027, everyone will work on it. There'll be a certain point in time where they will have to, they'll have a deadline for submitting, and then it'll be locked.
Okay.
So that it's not, not a constant change until we probably get to our committee meetings. So we'll have to look at our, our process. It won't be too, I don't think it'll be too different, but, but process will probably change, change a little bit.
Okay. And that's going to be for the department managers only, who can change things around, obviously, right? We're going to be review only, we clarify that. So there's no version we could go to as a board member and say, well, I'm going to look at things and play around with the numbers and stuff like that? We can't, we don't have that ability.
You can't do that, no. But you can see what they've done. So it's, it's, because all the board members have access to everything. So like, maybe Margaret would focus on the police department and look and see what's been done in that 2027 column and our, our revenues exceeding our, our expenses. But the department heads only have access to their, the departments they're responsible for.
Thank you.
Is that for both edit and review then, Teresa, for the department managers? Or can they, can they review all and only edit their own?
They can, the, the, the board can review everything.
Right. But department managers, are they only able to review and edit their own?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes. Also... There, you can do attachments. You can also put notes on, on certain items as far as communicating or even for the committee meetings too, to have those notes in there, like, you know, we did this because.
Right, that's a good thing.
A little different question. I see this looks like a very good tool for us to look at ourselves alone. I'm thinking about that other Munetrix you had mentioned before. It's sort of... It's sort of set up differently. Munetrix is set up where you can compare your government to another one because you have the information for yourself and the rest of the world as you choose to arrange it. Are we going to still keep the Munetrix if we ever choose to use it for that purpose?
I, I think we are. There are certain things that Munetrix does that the state of Michigan looks at. They, they rate
Yes.
every year's performance. This doesn't, doesn't necessarily do a rating. Actually, the, the chairman at Munetrix, you know, I had met him when I was working at Finance Director of the School District, and he stopped in here to, to say hi. And so he actually wants to come and, to the board and do a small presentation. And, and maybe at that point...
That would be interesting.
Yeah, we can...
It's a little bit different tool. I think Rick Snyder, when he put that together, had a little different view in mind, but it's a tool that may have some use if we kept it around.
Right, right. So again, the Munetrix focuses on the general fund. It requires more information, I mean, if you're a school district, than a city or a township. But that seems to be the standard that everybody goes by. Do we have to? I, I would have, I'd have to ask him or check with our, you know, the different organizations to see if we have to. This, you know, you can look at any fund and look at it historically, current year budget, where Munetrix is focused on the general fund and, and rating that and depending on the fund balance, taxable value, the debt, and everything. And this gives, this gives, I think, people more information.
Yes, for the, for the local community. To work with.
I'm sorry?
For the local community to work with.
Yes, correct. So once I'm done with the trainings this week, this URL will go on our website. And they will see on the transparency. This is what everybody will see.
All set?
I, I think so. I hope this is a good introduction
Yes, thank you.
for everybody. And there will, I guarantee you, there'll be more emails, more communications. And, and especially as we get closer to budget time. I just wanted to also reinforce when we looked at all the columns and we look at the... We've got 2027 in progress. So, so the 2027 in project, progress is going to be our budget for '26, '27. I added right now one column for the fiscal year '28 forecast. You know, we, we talk a lot about a five-year plan. And I can certainly set up five years of forecasts. Under the operational budgeting, you have to put in every number. One of the other modules, I believe it's a strategic planning, is where you can say, okay, do a 3% increase in all the expenses. So there's other modules that probably have an enhanced procedure for doing the planning, but you can also do the planning in here. If somebody wants, wants more columns for forecasting, they can certainly, I can certainly add them as well.
So I got a question. So when you say there's other modules you can do that with, is that included with this program? Or is this just something we have to look at?
That's a separate module than the, the operational budgeting.
Included with what we bought or purchased?
It's not included.
So we have this?
Yeah, we have to, it'd be additional cost, yes. There, there are separate modules. So this, this shows what we have is in green. And the additional things that they offer, which is strategic planning, capital project tracking, capital budgeting, and personnel budgeting. And then clear forms, which I'm not sure what that is right now.
Do you have some idea what the added cost would be for this portion we were just talking about? For the...
The strategic planning.
Yeah. Well, if we were to put that into the purchase, how much more money would we need?
Correct, correct, yes.
We would need more money. I was saying, do you have a handle on how much money that would?
Right.
Do you know how much it would be?
I would have to get updated pricing.
That's all, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
You have a ballpark figure in your mind?
I think for each additional module, it's between 6,000 and 7,000.
Okay. We're not giving away the story.
Yeah, no. But each, each module has a, has a specific purpose. Obviously, the budgeting focuses on current year budgets, but you can add things. And you, you would just have to put in each number manually, which when you break it down by department, it's pretty manageable with eight people, eight different people doing it. And then it gets all, it gets all put together. But I can have, you know, especially with the general fund, there are one, two, four or five people that have different departments in the general fund. And I can look at it all at one time and see, they can say, okay, we're done. And I can immediately see what does the general fund look like.
Okay, so do you think any of these other modules would be, I guess, useful or beneficial?
I think so.
Okay.
Especially with what, you know, we're focusing on now and as far as long-term planning. Their support has been phenomenal.
Okay.
Their, their training, yes, they have the ClearGov Academy, and, and I do go back to those to just refresh my memory on things. But they are always available to answer questions. And I can set up meetings for half-hour, hour sessions to go over things.
So since we're going to go live with this, if we were to purchase any of these other modules, we can just transfer things over right away, right? This wouldn't take a lot of uploading and work on your behalf, right? Now it's just a matter of shifting things over to a module?
It may require other things being uploaded, but even uploading their this data request form, that's how I got all the information in here. As I went to BSNA, I ran revenue and expenditure reports, exported them to Excel, and then filled out the request and attached the file. And depending on how much it is, it might take a day or two days or sometimes a few days, depending on the volume that they're doing. At the beginning, when I gave them five years of information, that, that took a little bit.
Okay. So based on what you know now, and as we move forward, do you think you might be able to come up with an idea of what you think would be useful for you and for, for our departments? Other than the strategic planning?
I would go circle back and, and look at what each one had that we can use and then get more, and then get new, updated pricing and information.
So I think the strategic planning is going to be important.
Personnel budget, you know, personnel module. You know, I do have a big master Excel schedule with every single person's salary and benefits. I, I don't know if what they have is, is worth switching.
Okay.
You know, it, it works. I have to change a number either way.
Right.
So for that. But I think for the, the capital planning and the, and potentially the strategic planning, those would potentially be good for the, what our goals are. I'm sorry?
Do you think the potential good would be to use ClearGov there?
We could use it and have, and keep track of the information and, and update things efficiently.
Yeah, that would be an advantage, but when you were comparing that with the employee, leaving it where it is now would seem to be just as good. You were comparing one with the other.
Looking at what we, you know, what we have, there are some things that we don't have right, that we don't have right now. So yeah, we'd look at what we had and determine, is it worth using? And putting in all that information and uploading everything.
We'd have to look at the circumstance, because in some circumstances, it does bring benefit, in others, it would not.
Yeah.
What we do as we get this up and running, and then Teresa will review it, and she'll come back to us then and say, you know, I think it's worthwhile to have A, B, or C, or whatever. And then we can look into it, and we'll go from there. So I think it's. To get it going is the most important thing, and then we will see. And obviously, you know, Teresa's opinion on what you feel you would like or you don't think you need. Then you just relay to us, and we'll go from there.
Okay. One last thing I wanted to point out. You know, I have five years of historical actual information, which is typically what the department has to look at also when they're doing their budgets. So the. The fiscal year 26 actual, so that's the current year. So. That is, right now, I know that's as of July 31st, 2025. So I have to periodically send them a file to upload to update this. It would have been too confusing, I believe, to have multiple years of 2026 actual. So as long as I know what that represents. But that is not a live figure. You know, our BSNA software and the information that's in there is still what's current and live. And it's just a matter of me preparing an Excel schedule with the information, sending it to them, and asking them to update it.
Teresa, can I, maybe I missed this. When did you think, first of all, thank you very much for suggesting that we invest in this and bringing it to the board. When, did you say when you think it might be available for the public?
So the transparency page?
Just the.
So the transparency page is what's available to the public. I will try and upload it by Wednesday or Thursday, once I'm done with the training with the department managers.
And.
That's after Wednesday.
And it will be fully, so the only thing that the public will be able to get is the transparency page?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But when you look at the transparency page, even when you look at. You know, you have all these different years. So 2026, that 2026 figures are as of July 31st. The information in both modules is the same.
Will, and I. Will we be able to use this in lieu of Munetrix?
I don't, that I don't know. That's why it was actually very good timing that the chairman of Munetrix showed up here last week. And he did offer to come here, and I'd really be interested to see what he, what he has to say. All I've known, even when I was in the school district sector, is Munetrix.
Munetrix is designed to ensure compliance with certain state regulations about transparency. So if somebody had mentioned the Snyder administration a number of years ago, that legislation which mandated that transparency, putting that information out to the public, is specific about what you're supposed to provide, Munetrix was the solution to that. So I guess to elaborate on that a little bit, ClearGov, the information that's provided there would have to satisfy that legislative mandate. And whether it does or it doesn't, we would have to find out.
There are municipalities in Michigan that use ClearGov. I haven't looked at them to see if you go on their website, they have Munetrix as well. But, you know, like, the focus on Munetrix is rating the performance of the general fund. And in the school district arena, it's a lot more required information that has to be posted on there as well. You know, I'm still, you know, I upload the financial statements on Munetrix, and I put it on our website, and the information is here as well too. So I'm not sure at this point.
Just to make sure we're all grounded. So when residents, when this transparency page is opened up to residents, and I think you said this, I just want to make sure we're all clear, that does not open up an unapproved budget, right? Correct. I just want to make sure we're all in alignment. That's only showing what has been approved.
Correct.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Correct. And I can, I can manage the information that's shown on here.
Perfect.
So, you know, we have that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just like right now, no one can see those downloaded financials because I don't want to look at any financial that has expenditures first. I just, it's not, I'm like, I can't believe no one actually brought this up to them because in no accounting anything is that ever the right presentation, you know, the right presentation. And frankly, I have a problem with it. You know, I.
I'm a little surprised that they can't adjust that. Normally, data management tools can allow for, you know, a new formatting, if you will. So I'm a little surprised they don't allow for that, but.
I've got to follow up with our, they're called Client Success Managers. That one had to go up the chain a little bit.
Okay.
And I haven't heard anything yet. So before we have our scheduled meeting on Thursday, I want to give her an opportunity to follow up and see where that's at. Because I did, I did test it this afternoon, and it, well, I just pulled it up too during the meeting. So I just think it's better reading also, you know, when the revenue is first.
Yeah, that's the standard, right?
Thank you very much, Teresa.
You're welcome.
And the training is Wednesday, correct? At noon or 11:00? 11:00, thank you. Okay, thank you, Teresa, for that. Very informative. We'll go to public comment. You know what, Brian, let's go to the audience first because we do have some people here, and then we'll go to you. Anybody from the audience, public comment three minutes? No, this is whatever you like. What's ever on your mind, Kathy? Well, almost.
Kathy Walker, 26051 Thorpe Court. I know I haven't been here for a while, but, hell, I wrote this, and let's just go. I want you to know that I supported every one of you when you ran for office. I really wanted the board to be stocked with some fresh ideas and people and things. We'd had, was kind of stale there for a while. And I wanted everybody to contribute their talents. Some of you are younger, some of you are older, some of you are smarter, some of you have more common sense. It's a nice mix. Each one of you were elected for your own special qualities. Although I've not regularly attended the board meetings, I do watch them on G I T V. And I was hoping to see mutual respect and support for common interest. I was surprised to see this early on in the administration, the lack of cooperation at times and consensus if your personal opinions differ. Because you guys were elected to represent the people, even though you might, you know, everybody's got their own opinions. We all have our own things. A lot of times, you gotta swallow that and vote for the people. I think you all know that. Okay, four years ago, four years is a long time to be together. You guys are tied to each other for four years. Think about being in a marriage that you don't like for four years. Oh, my God. And I would hope, going forward, each one of you will listen, which I know is hard sometimes. And each one of you will not disregard your colleague when they offer structured ideas, and you will, and you will represent the residents opposed to personal agendas. Because that's not going well. After all, you were elected to serve the public, and I hope you will. And I take this from, like I said, I supported you all, I'm rooting for you all, and I thought I might mention these things. Okay?
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else in the audience? No one with that. Brian, you're up.
All right, I just have one this evening. Deb York, Bellevue. We headed down to Island Athletics this morning to get a little court time with out-of-town family. Lo and behold, there was not a parking spot to be had, and several of us resorted to parking on the grass. The music was pumping, and the exercise class was overflowing. There were several residents in the workout area and numerous pickleball matches going on. It was really so energizing to see. This is the way a community recreation facility should look. But it also made me sad to think that we will most likely shortly be losing this amenity that so many have come to enjoy and rely on. I completely understand the dilemma of the aging building, which falls under the authority of the Airport Commission, an entity that receives not $1 of Groseal tax money. The commission is between a rock and a hard place. But the truth of the matter is that Island Athletics has provided a much-needed and well-utilized amenity over the past several years that many have come to love and enjoy. So first, I want to express my deepest appreciation to Alan and Bobby for their exhaustive and extensive efforts to hang in there and keep the facility running. In spite of all the obstacles such as old building, such an old building has thrown at them, their never-ending commitment to club members and island residents will not be forgotten. But the question begs to be asked, why is the township recreation not a regular part of a bigger conversation? I understand why they have no interest in taking on the aging building. We all understand that problem. But I also understood that during the master plan survey process, residents listed indoor recreational facilities as one of the top three, five priorities to address. Should not the township be looking at the value of the service Island Athletics has been providing and be part of, and encourage a larger conversation to analyze and evaluate current recreational needs and seek ways to meet those needs for the entire community? I know there is no simple solution, but it is only in the best interests of the community to look closely at what Island Athletics has shown us about current resident wants and needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Ms. York, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Kevin, the consent agenda.
Good evening. I move that we approve Consent Agenda 25-054.
Second.
That includes the following minutes of the August 11th, 2025, regular meeting. Township Board of Trustees. 11. Sorry, 11:20, 25 minutes. Check register dated August 22nd, 2025. Planning Commission resignation. And for accept 33rd District Court 2024 Financial Report. And that's the complete consent agenda.
Okay, so approval of Consent Agenda 25-054. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Kevin. Okay, action items. Kevin, you have the first one, which is number three, one and two have been deleted. Excuse me.
Bless you.
Bless you. I move that we approve the purchase agreement, I'm sorry, I move that we approve the purchase of a CAT 420 backhoe.
Need a second? I'll second it.
Second.
The recommendation, the Groseal Township Board approves the purchase of a new CAT 420 backhoe loader at a cost of $140,025. And further declares surplus and recommends the disposal of the existing unit via trade-in with Michigan CAT, for which the trade-in value has been credited against the purchase of the new unit. The township's existing loader backhoe is 17 years old and is in need of replacement. This unit used to be, this unit is used for a variety of DPS activities and is an important component of our operation. Michigan CAT has the state bid contract for Caterpillar equipment. The price offered is the national bid price, Sourcewell, which is an approved collaborative bid venue for the township, and satisfies the township's competitive bid requirements. The department prefers to stay with CAT brand equipment because of the familiarity of operator, our operators have with CAT equipment. In addition, service centers for CAT are located nearby. Michigan CAT has, was asked to provide a trade-in value for our existing unit. This value was applied to, applied as a credit to our new purchase price. The trade-in value will be credited to the first year's payment on the unit. The remainder of the unit will be paid for over the next four years at an annual payment of $30,554.97. Any comments you would like?
Anything for Derek also, being the head of the DPS?
Yes. I guess I'm just surprised a 17-year-old piece of heavy equipment produced by CAT is just totally worn out. I know, I mean, I'm, my grandfather owned a sandmine and had CAT equipment, and most of it was older than I am today and still working just fine. So I'm, what's the, what's the deal with the backhoe?
So I wouldn't say that the unit is completely wore out. It's about 3,500 hours on it. But it has gotten to the point where its frequency of maintenance is much higher as far as components breaking on it. It's the only loader backhoe that we have in the DPW department, so taking it down for service or if it does have breakdowns, puts a real dent in our operations. So we've been seeing those costs mount year over year and increase in frequency. So now, while there's still a little bit of value left in the unit, although it hasn't completely exceeded its lifespan, it is being recommended by the staff to replace because of that, those concerns. The existing, or the unit that has been spected is also a little bit more capable. The previous unit was a 416, this one's a 420. It's far more powerful and serves our operations a lot better. And in addition, there have been some issues we've experienced with some of the turbo components of that, of that tractor that's been a persistent year, persistent issue throughout its lifetime. So, which has caused problems for us in operation. So there's a variety of different factors that all play into the reasons for that. That's why it was budgeted in this fiscal year and has been planned for actually the past couple of years to replace this unit, so.
Okay. So that was part of the capital improvement plan for this? I mean, you knew this was coming due?
Yes, it's part of our, we have a capital improvement schedule or capital improvement plan for our fixed assets, like our water and sewer lines. But also, we have a replacement schedule for our equipment as well. And this was one of the things that we have on our schedule.
Okay. Pardon me. So you also said this is a more powerful unit. Does it have any more of a, I guess, expansive reach? Does it dig deeper? Does it do anything different than the one we have now other than have more, I guess, horsepower?
It does. It digs deeper, it has more horsepower. Overall, from a structural standpoint, it's a larger unit versus the 416. So we have had some issues where that existing unit is underpowered, not only from its size, but also some of the issues that we have with the turbo on it, so.
That's not going to require any extra training for our staff?
No. Matter of fact, we've been actually able to demo this unit for probably the past two or three weeks. Actually, probably longer than that. It's probably been close to a month, and our guys are very comfortable with it. In addition to the 420, we also actually demoed a replacement 416, and the guys prefer the 420 over the 416, heads over tails, so.
Is this model also diesel engine and turbo?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't know whether, warranty with the product?
There is a warranty with the product. I don't recall right off the top of my head, but it is listed in the paperwork. I want to say it's either three or five years. I think there's a three-year, like. I think there's a three-year, like, service warranty with it as well, so there's a pretty expansive warranty package that comes along with the product.
Derek, I'd like to just clarify and solidify the understanding of this. This 420 has a different engine and a different turbocharger than the other one, and this was time-proven to be a more reliable and usable piece of equipment.
I would say the 420 is a more capable unit than the 416 is. It's a heavier unit, more robust, it's got a bigger engine in it, it's a more...
Different engine with a different turbocharger, and all those types of things would probably be less worrisome.
Well, it's going to be a new unit compared to our previous unit.
Got it.
I don't know that, I think your question is probably about design, different types of design.
Yes, yes, yes.
I can't speak to the issues that the existing 416 has. I don't think that those are known to be an issue, obviously with the new unit, if that answers your question.
I got it.
Okay.
So storage and servicing, how do you guys handle that? I assume this is stored inside?
Stored inside, all of our equipment is stored inside, and it's generally serviced out at the Michigan CAT Center out on Dix Toledo, I think is where that's at, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or concerns for Derek or for Kevin? Okay, with that, action item number three, the approval of CAT 420 backhoe purchase. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Thank you very much. I'll take number four. Let me pull this up on my phone, it's easier. Okay, in reading this, you'll see it's a little different, but you'll understand why it's written like this. The Groseal Township Board hereby selects, and in parentheses, number of respondents to interview for the position of cell tower consultant services for the Township of Groseal. Those organizations to be interviewed are to include, and will list them. Need a second to go into the history?
Second.
Thank you, Margaret. Five applications were received. A motion will need to be made determining which firms to be interviewed. This is what the reason for this motion, we have not picked anybody yet, this is only to see who and how many we would like to interview from the board. Who would like to start on this?
I can go to start. I think we should at least interview at least three of the different applicants of the five. I know we're going to get a different feedback from each company, but I don't think we should be a one-and-done thing. I think we should look at at least three different companies, set up an interview date and go through three of them. We'll come up with some structure questions.
Do you have your three, though, that you would prefer, Mark?
I, yeah, well, I have, I'm looking at four right now, but I can narrow it down to three by the time we actually do this. Or if we're going to make that vote tonight, I can make it tonight too as well.
Anybody else on the board have how many or who they looked at?
I tended to want to lean toward the ones that were more in the state of Michigan and perhaps accustomed to dealing with people more our size. Right now, coming up, I think Varnum is one of them that I like, and they're in Grand Rapids. The other one has among their clientele Plymouth Township. It happens, I was comparing things and looking for a comparable township to Groseal the closest I could get, and Plymouth Township was it, so that sort of, that memory sort of had some weight for me. The idea of that familiarity, I found it to be a strength.
Anyone else have an amount or?
I have, I have two that I thought were within our, in my opinion, within a good price range and that had a good background that they were worth interviewing, and that was Urban Wireless and Kurt Russell.
Urban was the other one.
Okay, I did look at, I'm sorry, were you done, Margaret?
Yeah, no, no, that was it.
Urban Wireless was one. Mark, I'm not sure how many, I guess we'll come up with that.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm not sure, I don't have a...
Joe Urban was the one I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
All three of us have mentioned Urban.
I have to, I'm not sure how to do this, Derek, but I definitely, a good friend of mine is the managing partner, which I had no idea that they even did this, so, on one of the firms, so I'm going to have to stay out of one of them even mentioning it, so I just don't think that's fair. But Derek, did you, I know that you read them, do you have input? I know there was two also. I think you had two the same, so.
Yeah, I looked at Urban Wireless as somebody that I would be interested in speaking with. Their rate structure was competitive. I know that I've received contact from one of their managing principals of the company a couple times. They seem like they're very anxious and excited to do work, and also somebody had called on a reference for them as well, so it looks like their proposal is complete. And then Kurt Russell, as was mentioned by trustee Shelton, appeared attractive as well. That's my input.
What I wanted to do tonight is see, first, number one, how many do you guys think? I don't know if all you have three, and Mark, if we have three, I don't care if it's five, but I'm not into, rather, my opinion is, I don't feel it's necessary to interview five of them, four or three, just on my opinion, but I have no problem. If the one goes, I would just recuse myself from the vote, but I have no problem. I think Kurt Russell, their firm is one of the best firms for what they do anyway. And again, I did not even know that they had anything to do with this type of legal representation, so. Do we have an amount? Can we come up with an amount tonight? I really would like that. And are you, if we're not ready, we're not ready. This is just a discussion item. But I have the two firms that I'd like to interview. Does anybody else have anything else for the firms? Let's start that way, I'm going to go backwards. For the firms itself, are we ready tonight, or would you guys like to look these over? Know where we're going right now, and we'll come back and then put them in?
Ready tonight for what? To come up with how many we're going to interview and who?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm ready too. I reviewed it, and I would interview Kurt Russell and it's Urban Wireless is the other one. I'm good with that. I can't sit on the one, on the interview, or nor could I vote, but I am willing to do that. Anybody else? I mean, if you're not ready, if you're not ready, you're not ready.
I have a comment I'd like to make on that. If we were to base it on the feedback that we've gotten from the people here on the board, those two names came up most frequently, and I literally came up in the same spot that Joe did. But if other people haven't developed an opinion yet because they're letting it saute for a while, I don't want to miss some other thought where we've overlooked something, either another firm or another issue. And I'm a little at ease that, well, Urban has come up three times, Kurt Russell's come up at least two, maybe three times. And I don't want to overlook something because somebody there hasn't solidified or is ready. I'm not sure what to do with that. I think that the current consensus is two.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Jamison, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, so I think interviewing all five is probably not necessary. I would say three, maybe even two. But I would point out that Diamond Consulting was the only one that talked about filling gaps in our current wireless provisioning and included heat maps of coverage. So they're the only ones that have noticed we have significant coverage gaps on the island and that wanted to potentially fill those gaps, which is a routine complaint by residents, right? Like, I just don't have any cell service on the southeast end, or, you know, don't call me when I'm on the north end because I'll be in Canada, you know?
That's an important point.
So I do think they offer something that's a little bit different than everyone else did, and that they actually want to talk about like how we can provide better service, so.
So I think it might be worth reading a little further too on theirs, but they also want to take a large portion of our profits from the cell towers?
Yeah, I think we would want to negotiate about that, right? But I did notice they were the only ones that offered to make any kind of improvements and not just consult, and I thought that was a good thing.
Yeah, I guess that just, I align with what you're saying. It just kind of turned me off when they're asking to be profit participants.
We can always talk about that, true, in the interview, or we can, that's negotiable, and if we don't like it, then we don't like it.
Yeah, I'm sure they're willing to, well, I'm not sure, but maybe they're willing to structure in a different format, or maybe we run the numbers and they're not even making any more than anybody else, right? I didn't do the math, Margaret.
That's all right.
But it's also equally the case that we can turn around and ask Urban or one of the others what they could do to help us with the places where gaps are a problem. They might be, we could bring it up and they could find a way to take care of it.
All right, Kevin, you had something? Kevin?
Does anybody else have any other comments?
You're up.
When I was reviewing the list of firms that are interested in managing our cell towers and cell business, the one that I felt was very interesting was Varnum LLP, and they are among the most expensive on an hourly basis. I think that's worthwhile interviewing them because they have had a presence in Michigan for years, they have provided cell service management or legal advice for cell business since cell towers have been erected. They have a national reputation. They, I heard about them through a, attorneys have to get continuing education, and I listened into a continuing education program that their firm and their managing partner, who would be our contact, presented, and it was very, very interesting. And they make these presentations across the country doing this. I am cognizant of the cost, the hourly cost, but I'm also curious what you get for, you know, their hourly cost, and I would like to interview them because they do have, as I said, a national reputation. I did call, one of their references was the business administrator, or the business administration manager of the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority in Grand Rapids, and I spoke with Tom Sazakis. I may have, may not have pronounced that properly. He was a very, very, very nice person, called me back, and what he said was that Varnum has been very, very cognizant of, you know, every, costs, costs generally. They also offer a full range of other services to the airport besides cell management, and he was very pleased with their, how quickly they respond to everything generally. As far as managing our situation, I did ask him about the dead spots on the island, and that is something that is negotiated by the attorneys with the, with, you know, the township. The other thing is, they offer and have put together a, or they help townships put together policies and procedures and ordinances to make sure that we're moving in the right direction and are covered legally for any kind of situation that would come up and put the township in jeopardy or legal, legal issues. So I think that, yes, they are expensive, but at the same time, you know, sometimes you, you know, again, I think it would be worthwhile finding out what, and asking them directly, what do we get for that, for your, the cost that you are asking. So I am strongly in favor of interviewing Varnum.
Kevin, could I ask your question?
Sure.
You were talking about a broad range of legal advice as I was hearing you. Are you saying they would also function beyond the cell towers as a?
No, no, they would strictly be our cell tower.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
And consultant.
Well, what we need to do, though, if we want to move forward, we're going to have to figure out as a group, how many and which firms? So why don't we do this first? How many are we willing to interview? How many do you want to interview?
That's a question, I would like to do three.
I would like to do at least three.
I'd like to do three.
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 So we know it's three. Are you guys ready to come up with the three tonight? And we'll continue with the motion, or? It sounds like the three, now what I have, Kurt was one.
Yep.
I had Urban as the other, and I think others did too.
Yep.
Kevin, I'm sorry, was that Diamond? Who did you have? Who'd you?
I'm supporting interviewing Varnum.
I brought up Diamond.
Varnum. Diamond was brought up too. Well, we have to come to a decision tonight then. Well, we don't have to have it tonight, but...
I think it'd be optimal since it was an action item for that.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, this is what we got to do, we got to move forward. So we want to do three. Is everybody in favor? How about this? Is everybody in favor of Kurt Russell and of Urban?
Yes.
Are we in favor of those gentlemen down there?
I'm in favor of that also.
William? Okay. So those are two of the three.
That was Kurt Russell and Varnum.
No, Kurt Russell and Urban.
Urban, Bill.
Urban, okay.
Yeah, that was Urban.
Got it.
Yes. Okay, so we have Diamond and Varnum as the next two. Any thoughts on that?
I would like to go with Varnum. I like Jamison's idea about Diamond as far as the heat map and so forth, but we can ask that of all three that we do interview, so.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't think it's imperative that, I'm willing to concede Diamond if we do look at how to provide better service with the other providers, yeah.
Well, Kevin, you brought up Varnum, and I think, not to say you're the only one that had Varnum, but let's keep it all where we have, you know, some input from all of us, so what would you guys say? How about we do Kurt? I keep saying Kurt Russell, so Kurt Russell, Urban, and then Varnum as the third interview, and Jamison brings up a real good point. We can ask any question we want or what services. So each of us now have some input to get a consensus to move forward and do the interviews. Is that fair?
Yes.
Got it? Okay. Then I'm going to, Brian, how would you like me to just fill in the blanks? We're going to be doing those three?
Yes, fill in the blanks and just name them, and we're good.
Okay, let me...
This isn't an action item.
It is.
Yeah, this is an action item.
I thought this was, oh, you're right, I forgot. Never mind. I was thinking we were on the discussion item.
No, no, this is the action item.
My bad.
That's why I said I got to, I would like to move through this. Okay, so the Groseal Township Board hereby selects three respondents to interview for the position of cell tower consultant service for the Township of Groseal. Those organizations to be interviewed are to include Kurt Russell, Urban, and Varnum. And I apologize, I don't have the, in front of me, it's...
You have three names there, Joe.
Yeah, I know, but I know, but it's Urban Wireless, is it Urban?
Urban Wireless.
Wireless, I'm sorry, Urban Wireless, Kurt Russell, Urban Wireless, and then Varnum.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passed, those are the three. Brian, did you get them? Gotcha, thank you so much. Gotcha, thank you so much. All right, very good. Next will be a discussion item on the bid process. We had some individuals that believe we should speak about some issues we had on on bids and pricing, and I think it's the best thing to have a discussion item on it. And that's why we're here tonight. Derek had a meeting with all the managers.
Can we make that any larger? I can't see it. I'm sorry.
And they have.
Thank you.
Thanks, that does help. And they have come up with some suggestions. I think that the board was also tasked to go through, I believe, I don't have the the book in front of me, but I have the the copies or pictures of it. And I think it's section four eight of our policy and procedure book. So if anybody has done that, we'll bring that up. Derek, would you like to give your side first with the managers would like to see? And what their suggestions were? And then we'll give some of ours and we'll we'll go from there.
Can I? I, if it's pleases the court, could we present, could the town or the board present their ideas first?
I don't, that's fine with me. Yeah, that's fine with me.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Who would like to, Kevin, would you like to go first then?
No.
No?
Well, I can, well, so I I can go first if you'd like. That's fine.
Go ahead.
I presented everybody with a copy of something that I drew up. And it's up on the screen right now. I can read it verbatim if you'd like me to. We can go through this. Just some proposed changes or amendments. Would you like me to go and read it into the record?
Go ahead with the points and yeah, just.
Yeah, don't read the whole thing.
Okay, so I'd like to change the responsibility requirements around this. So the township manager, we I believe we can have him as our facility maintenance manager. Meaning the department managers could go through and they would put requests in of their, whatever facility they're overseeing or in charge of. And then submit it through our manager, who could oversee the project as as needed to make sure things are moving along and depending regardless of what building it is. It could be Parks and Rec, it could be what Sentinel Farms, whatever the case is. He can make sure it moves along as it's supposed to properly. Each manager can go in and submit their needs or wants for that particular facility. And we also have to have like an operations plan. So I mean, I kind of, I looked up what the operations and financial plan should be, the best practice to follow. And I looked through the Government Finance Officers Association as one entity as I looked at. Once looking at those, they were suggesting the best practices would be the three to five year operations and financial plan. So I think it would be incumbent upon us as a board to make sure that our department managers are coming up with these operational financial plans so we can forecast and project certain capital needs and certain capital expenses and revenues and expenditures coming in and going out. So we can plan for certain things. I'm going to point to Sentinel Farms. I wasn't here for that vote. I did watch it from where I was at at the time. Without going into a lot of detail, it is what it is. It was voted on and passed, but for lack of better words or a better analogy, it seemed like the dog was wagging, the tail was wagging the dog, so to speak, meaning the contractor wrote the specs. And I think the township should be writing the specs for what we need. Now, whether that goes to our our township manager or whether it goes to our engineering company or whatever the case may be depending on the project, we should provide the specs and have a minimum, in my opinion, three bids to choose from for whatever project we have to have done. And in a nutshell, that's what this document shows. And this will be out for the public later on. Right now it is, and then you guys can look this over later on too. But that's kind of where I'm coming from. We need to have one focal point for all these facilities manager. And then we have to have these operation and financial plans in place to show what we need, what's coming up for the police department, for the fire department, for the generator, for the bridge. I mean, we just had an issue with the bridge, right? The power going out. I think we need a generator down there. So this is the kind of things that I'm talking about, but I think there should be one focal point. Now, I know it sounds like I'm trying to put something else on Derek. And Derek, I'm sorry if you feel that way, that's not it. I'm not even sure we should have Derek as the manager of the bridge. He should be overseeing everything. Maybe we have somebody else running the bridge. And that's a discussion for another time. But my point is, is bringing this together is we have our department managers submitting the wants and needs to our township manager who can oversee the facilities management and maintenance of these buildings of our, you know.
I have a couple, I guess, comments.
Go ahead.
If that's all right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I do have a little bit of concern about township manager bandwidth. I think if Derek were just the township manager and not the DPS director and the senior bridge operations officer and the, I don't know, you know, chief of the Township Bowling League and everything else he does.
Agree.
So I I almost wonder if we need to bring back the DPS director or some tertiary assistant of some type if we're going to put, if we're going to make him the, you know, facilities manager. But I do see the need for us to have a whole inventory of township facilities and a systematic approach to their maintenance and repair.
Some consistency in the whole process.
Right. I I have some concern with the township providing specifications. I know you said we're applicable, so I think we got a little wiggle room there. But as an example, like, we don't necessarily know exactly what we need sometimes, right? Sometimes we're like, we know we need a roof. But what are the specific roofing materials and options and things like that? I think sometimes it's good to have them present us, you know, the industry experts to present us with what what they what they have. So maybe instead of specifications, we're providing them with performance criteria, right? Like, we don't care what tiles you use on the roof. We care that they have a 30-year lifespan and keep water out. And then just in in column A under township manager, in that final paragraph, it says if three bids are not received via the post process, the township supervisor will contact additional contractors. I think that should actually be the department manager since they're the ones spearheading the specific RFP. It's kind of incumbent on them to come up with the number of required bids.
Okay, I mean, I can live with that too. My point is I want to make sure we get three different.
Yeah, just the not being, because I'm the supervisor, but yeah, I don't think I should get in the day to day process of that's not my job to get into the day to day process of anything.
Okay, no, that's fair.
That's okay. A couple of things on the bid content down below, Mark, I think that are under history, but it works. I know we've expanded what our discussion will be about tonight. I knew this would expand a little bit on not just bids, but what's based upon these bids and and what's around them. So once again, I always say this, but it's good information to have. And I can understand that.
So I think it would also help to, I think we need to understand cost. And when we're talking about involving the township engineer in and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's what we're saying here is that when you say we shouldn't spec things out, we should have our engineering firm spec them out.
It depends on the project, right? So if if we need an engineering opinion, then we have them spec it out. It depends on what we're trying to do.
But who define, who determine? See, I am not necessarily disagreeing with you. I just think I don't want to get down the path where somebody goes, oh, well, you should have had the, you should have had Raines do this. And we don't have a very clear understanding of who's determining, you know, when we need to, when we need to leverage the engineering.
Well, it's going to be the scope of the project. I mean, if we're putting up a new building, I don't expect Derek to write the specs for a new building, right? We're going to have to have, you know, architects, engineers involved in that, right? Different planning. That's why, so I'm talking about the larger projects. We have them, bring them in. Smaller projects like Jameson's example, the roof, I I don't care which brand we use, like he says, as long as we have the lifespan there to cover what we need for X number of years. So we can come up with that and put that out to, say, a roofing contractor. And they can give us, here's our material, here's what we can do for this price. It's going to last this long. And here's our contingencies in case A, B, and C go wrong.
Okay, so where where do we draw the line on that is all I'm getting at? So so you mentioned, you know, you had concerns with how the the vote went the last time with respect to the the barn, right? So I don't know what the concerns were exactly, and we don't have to go down that path. I'm sure we probably will. But all I'm saying is, what, I mean, would you have expected department manager to leverage the engineering firm? Or I mean, what was the expectation?
None of that, no. Those are for windows. No, so I wouldn't expect a CE range to come in here and tell us what kind of windows we need. Absolutely not.
Okay.
Well, and I think that's why we should, we should be telling the contractors in the RFP what we need, right? What is our need? Not what to provide us, but what do we need? Right? We need a 100 by 20-foot building that'll hold a cat D20 or a D20A. But those are whatever the heck it is. Baco. A D20 would need a much bigger building than that. But we don't need to tell them it has to be made of, you know, weather tight aluminum.
Oh, correct. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about, the generalized, right?
Yeah, so we need to, we need to tell them what we need. We need to tell them the performance aspects of it, not necessarily the specification.
Correct, but something that's consistent across the board for for all of us to follow and go through one channel.
Right.
And make sure things are being followed up with.
But if a department manager chooses to leverage our engineering firm and their expertise, are we, are we going to require that we have to approve that? Or are we going to allow them to use their expertise to know when something is not necessarily in their wheelhouse? And can they just, can they leverage CE Raines?
Well, that's going to be dependent on the cost of the project. That's what we have, we have that. Of course, I think that probably should be tweaked too. But we're to have that in our policy.
If if I'm not mistaken.
The thresholds are there for us to approve as a board.
No, I know that approval, but I'm saying if they choose to leverage engineering, you know, I I guess I just don't want to tie their hands is all I'm getting at. I don't want this to be so strict.
Nobody goes to an outside consultant without the township manager's approval.
Derek does. He he is known, and it's in the procedure, that Derek has the ability to, anything he knows where that cutoff is, where Raines has to be notified.
Certain projects will go to the engineer for design, but right now it's incumbent upon the manager to determine whether or not it needs to go that route. Raines is the contracted engineer for the township, so it doesn't necessarily need to go to the board to have Raines get involved in that. But generally, if the township is going to incur cost or the manager is going to incur cost to have a different consultant, you know, perform a spec for the township for bidding purposes, that'll normally come to the board. A good example of that was when we went out for bridge engineering services. It was brought to you a proposal from a professional engineering company to develop the specification for the bridge engineering. So that came to you to approve that because there was a cost to that to develop the spec to put it out to bid. But to feed into the conversation that you're having the way it is right now is the or the the manager determines whether or not a consultant needs to come in based upon their level of expertise in that specific area.
And they have to go through you. They just don't call Raines up and say, I need you.
Yep, and if there's a cost.
They have to include Derek in this.
And if there's a cost, and if there's a cost associated with it, they'll come to the board if it's outside of Raines's area of expertise.
I'd like to throw a thought in here as I'm listening to this. It seems in in direct, simple terms, we need to decide what needs to be done and who's best qualified to do it. And when it comes to the details, we should choose the person who is most familiar with those details. And what I'm getting at then is that when you're looking at it, we can take Derek, who's up on top of everything. He can't keep track. He doesn't have, nobody has the brain with to keep everything together. But maybe in the DPS, there is somebody who knows that when that cat has $5,000 on it, somebody's got to look at the blower and have it serviced and put into the budget for the year the price of having the blower looked at. You see? That's just a concept. But you would do it over and over again with the Parks and Recreation. It might be windows in the in the red barn. We're talking about that. When are they going to be doing? How much will it cost? And what should they be? So let the people who are most familiar with the details come up with an idea and let the rest of it fall into place going up above that so that you have a sense of control. Somebody who did this masterfully worked for General Electric, just one second. Greg, who is the guy at General, at General Electric? Jack Welsh, no, thank you. What Jack Welsh did when he took over General Electric is he said, anybody that has an idea that works gets $10,000. And this is circa 1960 or something like that, just so you understand what he was saying. The corporation went on to have a whirlwind of prosperity and went for 10 years with just explosive growth. And they didn't buy a new piece of equipment. They did it with the thoughts of the people who were working there. I personally have only seen one thing that was similar to that when I was insuring businesses. There's, there used to be a small chain of drug stores called Century Drug. I think CVS bought them out. But Sid Bluestone was the manager at the time, the owner of the company. He would use his computer to keep track of the inventory in the 15 stores and order what needed to go on the shelves. And he had a heart attack. And he was out of circulation. So he turned to Chuck Fugate, his vice president, and said, Chuck, you do it. And Chuck was sitting there with nerves shaking. He'd never ordered anything like talcum powder for a baby or, or, you know, Lord knows what. So what he did is he went and he got a bunch, they had a bunch of what he lovingly called little old ladies who had a feather duster and had dusted off the merchandise and rearranged it and filled it up. And he let them decide what in the inventory needed to be purchased and how much. Well, when Sid was running the business and doing this all with great care, after everything was paid for and done and everybody was taken care of, but he had left over was roughly 4%. And that was considered pretty good for that type of thing and that kind of a business. After he had his heart attack and sat there in the hospital, these ladies took them to 7%. He went from 4% to an additional 3. Now, in proportion to terms, that's huge. But they knew the details. What I'm saying here, then, we would have, you know, some idea what the details are, what we need for our machines in the DPS or what we need, in whatever department we would want to do, the Recreation Commission. And let these people put a budget together. And then if there's a question, they're they're prepared to explain the details and why they're maintaining what they're doing. It would, I mean, we might need to invest in some training for people to think that way. But I think that that would be what I see needing going on here. And I like the way Mark's doing this. I'd employ him to be the guy spearheading the formulation or something like this.
Well, let's do this. Derek, I'd like to see what the managers had. I know, as I stated, I knew this was going to go further than just what the discussion item was based upon tonight, yes?
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, we got something.
I'll let you finish your.
Oh, I'd just like to see what the managers did. We're going to talk about the bid process. And then once if we have other issues, we can go further in another discussion item. But this tonight is about the bid process. And I've got to kind of keep us on track. And I'd like to hear what the managers have to say about the bid process. If you have something, go ahead.
I would like to say that this document, that this is the, what the managers put together.
Correct, correct.
This is the first time I'm seeing this. And it makes very, it makes significant changes to our policy and procedure book. And it takes out full full sections of our policies and procedures. And I find it difficult to have a conversation about this having not read it and looked through it.
Well, we're not deciding anything.
Well, no, I what I'm saying is I would, I would think that the board would like an opportunity to review this before we start discussing something we're not really.
Would it be beneficial if we explained to you the reasoning behind some of this? So then you can take that information back and review, review this document? Once again, we're not asking for any decision. This is a a conversation starter. It might benefit you in your review of it if you have a narrative that goes along with it so you understand the justifications for these items.
I think, I think this changes the whole policy and procedure regarding expenditure control. And I I, my feeling is, I wish I would have had an opportunity to read this ahead of the meeting so that I would understand what the point of view is that's coming from the managers. And since this I, this was brought up, one of the issues that I had is under policy and procedure 4.8, expenditure control. If if we're talking about, we can talk about micromanaging, which and man, it's a larger issue. And and I would like the opportunity to discuss this a little bit and read it through before you present it to the, to the board and the township. I also think that from what I'm looking at that Mark put together, it says this is a administrative policies and procedures, proposed modifications for facilities management and contract bidding. And in contract. And in contracting bidding. And the issue that came up uh that I saw as treasurer is that the, and, and the, the suggestion here is the township manager has the program lead. So what I'm seeing as I sign checks is that the managers, the township managers, their expertise may be in uh airport management, recreation, fire, uh police. Uh their expertise may not be in contracting what roof to put on, what windows to put in, when is, when do those things need to take place? So I think that the, the idea might, I, I think that's what I'm seeing here. A department manager will define the need for the project, for the project bid. In other words, if the department manager feels that uh the police station needs to have uh a new uh roof, then maybe we get a, for instance, I think this is what's done for the DPS department in a lot of situations. Reins, the uh engineer comes in and makes a suggestion or does the specs on specific items. Uh for instance, with the, I think they were brought in for the uh police and the uh generator. Uh and what I'm thinking is, and I think that's, if, does this sound like what you're talking about?
Yeah, no, it, it does, it does, but I mean, again, this is just discussion tonight and I don't think it's gonna be a problem. Listen, you have to give him to explain his side.
Well, my, my thought is the end, the, the manager can come and say, I need the following things to run my department. I need a, you know, uh I, I need a swimming pool. I need a building to have these, these events in. And they, the manager can, the individual managers could say what they want. And then it's the uh architect or engineer that can come in and give the specs it towards the bidding.
So Derek, I think I personally would like you to go through this. If that was your plan, I'd like, I've read through it. This makes sense. I haven't had time to like seriously deep dive it. But I mean, I had gone through this prior to coming here and um I didn't see this, but um this kind of makes sense to what I had seen. I think there is value in what Mark created as well. Um but with respect to our department managers, and perhaps I'm just, it may be misunderstanding. So the police department and the generator, that's a very good example. Both Chief Carmack and Chief Roscoe have been working for at least three months to get bids to determine what they wanted to support um some form of generator. They looked at solar. They looked at every possible option that they could. They got many bids. Then they went through, is it my, my bids? My, my deals? Yes, they went through them. Then they pulled in CE reins to make sure, because neither of them are electricians, neither of them are generator experts. So I, I guess I'm really struggling. We, if the implication is that a department manager is going to not spend their budget accordingly or appropriately, um I don't, I don't think we're being really good supporters of our department managers if that's the feeling. So that's why I'd rather, I'd like to listen to your version. I went, listened to Mark's. I like some of the things he has in here. I think we need to look at all of them so that we can have the big picture.
Yeah, and I think that we, we shouldn't, you know, you don't want to create procedures that are so stringent and regulatory that it doesn't allow for any.
That's my concern too. Thank you.
And I think that, I mean, I, I'll keep using the police generator one, like the, sure, uh the chief and deputy chief don't know what generator they need. But they know they need a generator that can run the police station for up to ninety six hours nonstop. And that it has to be able to run all this equipment, right? So that's what I'm talking about where I say, we need to be able to tell them what the performance we require, not necessarily the specifications. But I also think um, you know, none of these people are working in a silo, right? So if Doug, or I'm sorry, Chief Carmack needs to talk to the engineers, right? He can talk to the engineers. If he needs a generator expert and there happens to be one in DPS, he can go talk to him.
And that's what he's been doing. Yes, correct. He and Bob Roscoe have been doing that.
Yeah, they're not, they're not alone and unafraid out there just figuring out, trying to, you know, put together what they need.
They're very careful with their budget.
But that's not what I was implying either, just seeing all that.
Oh, no, no, no. I didn't think so. No, I didn't. No, that's not what I thought. I, I'm, I just think we need to look at everything.
All right, here's, this is what we're gonna do. Hold on a second. Again, once again, I've got to keep this going in the direction that we're, should be moving in. We have comments. It went way beyond the scope of what this was about in the beginning and that's fine because it's all very important issues and we want to hear this. Um what I'd like you to do, Derek, and we're gonna end this discussion item after you're done. And we're gonna have it again and everybody's gonna go home and digest everything because this discussion item is greater than just the bid four point eight, first two paragraphs. This is much greater. So can you just sum up the reasons why some of these changes came in? Just to give us a little bit of the Cliff Note version, and then when you're done, the discussion item's going to be over and we're gonna move on. And next meeting, we'll take it back up. After everybody digested what was brought to both of us, Mark.
Yeah.
And um, no, I meant what you gave us, Mark.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And um what Derek will be summing up for us. So go ahead, Derek.
Actually, for efficiency sake, I'd actually like to work from the back of this document to the front. So if we could start on page twenty two. Incumbrances and purchase orders. So those are two components that are listed in the policy. But the township has not done encumbrances or purchase orders in over twenty years. So the practice is not reflective of the policy and the policy isn't reflective of the practice. So in the order, in the interest of compliance, you know, we either need to do one of these or both of these, or write them out of the policy. Um generally, purchase orders or encumbrances are for much larger organizations. The township had tried it at one point in ti- in time and it, and it did not work, so it, it discontinued doing it some twenty years ago. Um or at least it was tried during that twenty period, twenty year period of time and, and they discontinued it. Um our managers are very aware of their budgets. I think if you take a look at the previous ten, fifteen years worth of budget results, you'll see that our managers stay within their budgets. Um purchase orders and encumbrances are intended to achieve that. We achieved that without them. Um so that is part of the reason, the majority of the reasons why that was suggested as a change. Either we do them. If we're not going to do them, it doesn't need to be part of the policy. The reasons we would do them or the reasons why we don't do them are something that's up for conversation, but that's why those suggested changes are built into that. If you go to um page twenty one, uh all bids will be opened at the advertised date and time subject to the manage, department managers or the, his or her designees attendance. So we want to make sure that the, the, the bid openings are done when the manager is, is in attendance um for when the bid openings take place. Um page twenty, I'm gonna start at the top. Um purchase currently its purchase in goods or services exceeding a contract cost of more than a thousand dollars um require um uh three formal bids. A thousand dollars, you can't get um, you know, a set of tires for a truck nowadays for a thousand dollars. So that number is, is, is definitely prohibitive. Um what we're suggesting changing that to is between twenty five hundred dollars uh and less than ten thousand dollars, it would be three written bids. Um I don't think we want formal bids. Um written bids are sufficient. They're good for the record. Um so it's a, a change from one thousand to five thousand to twenty five hundred to ten thousand. Anything over ten thousand would require the formal seating, sealed bidding process unless stated elsewhere in this. Um there is a cost to putting together formal sealed bidding. So you don't want that cost to be so low that the formal sealed bidding process um can be anywhere between twenty five percent to thirty five percent of the five thousand dollar expenditure. So that's why that's been adjusted. So formal sealed bidding is more in line with, you know, what the, the cost is as a proportion to the project expense. As is in the previous or the existing policy contract for professional services such as CPA attorney, that doesn't necessarily require bidding. But we still do that on a regular basis. It's just not part of the existing policy. Emergency repairs or services would be an exemption. Right now it just says emergency repairs. We suggest adding services because it could be an emergency service. Um and then also a sole source provider or single source provider, add that to the exemptions from bidding because that's the current practice right now. If we have a sole source provider, we don't require formal bidding or three bids for that matter because if they're the only provider of that, doesn't make sense to go out for bidding. It probably does not. Right now collaborative guaranteed purchasing programs must be approved by the board annually. Uh we don't do that annually. Once we approve it, we continue to use that. Um so either that needs to be the practice or we eliminate the annually, um if there's a value to doing it annually. Um those collaborative bidding entities don't normally change, so maybe a, a, a frequency different than annually might make sense. Right now bid requ- or I'm sorry, bids and requests and specifications consistent with the criteria should receive approval or signature from the township manager. The township manager might not necessarily have the um expertise in the area of the bid taking place. I, I don't know whether the specifications for a pool pump or a chlorine or something like that, for example, of the recreation or recreational advertising, you know, what their specifications are and whether they're going to be adequate or not. I, I do, as you mentioned earlier, do have bandwidth, but it's not in all areas. You know, for me to be the one that says that the specifications or criteria um is adequate for what they're trying to achieve. Um I can look at certain bid requirements and make sure that they're consistent with insurance requirements and format, but with regards to specific criteria about the project, probably beyond, you know, my area of expertise. The department manager has the option to consult with appropriate industry professionals to develop bid specifications. Um that has been modified. Um and all formal bids rather than the quotations themselves. The quotations themselves would be held with the manager. The formal bid results and the supporting documentation is what's being held at the clerk's office, not the formal, or not the quotations themselves. Um there are some additional verbiage in here with regards to the designee um of the department uh when it comes to um opening and things of that sort. Um that makes up the balance of the, the remainder of that page. If, if it's okay, Teresa might have some input with regards to some of these items as well, um if you don't mind.
Obviously, the most immediate need um is with the purchase orders and encumbrances. Using purchase orders and encumbrances are part of that um is a best, best practice. Um it is definitely a necessity when you have a larger organization or with my experience with a school district, you have how many buildings, how many principals, how many teachers, how many administrative assistants able to have access to that budget. The township has eight department managers who are responsible for their budgets. And they, they do, they do a good job. Um and so there are times when purchase orders can be a hindrance, like running up to Rose Hill Hardware to get some supplies. Or maybe it's something that costs more than, it might be something that costs more than twenty five hundred dollars, like um if a vehicle breaks down and we have to take it to Gornell Ford and the repair might be more than twenty five hundred. That's not really feasible for us to stop everything and not get that repair completed. In my professional opinion and the things I've observed during my um career prior to coming here, the, the process and procedure that we have work, works and it works effectively. I think the biggest concern is that the, but the policies and procedures don't reflect what we do. That's, that is a major concern. It should re, everything, whatever's in the policy and procedures, we should do.
The, the other thing with, with regards to that is, just to expand on the purchasing authority. In large organizations that have maybe more diversified purchasing authority, the PO works well for that. You know, we only have, we have eight managers, which those are basically the, the individuals that have the purchasing authority. We don't normally have uh, you know, an additional employee or, or, you know, um employees that aren't supervisory level that have that authority to make those purchases where the POs, you know, um obviously have, have a role, right?
I just want to, oh, I'm sorry. Were you, you said Teresa or?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Oh, okay. I didn't want to interrupt you. Okay. Um real quick. Just, I want to throw this in. Uh I spoke with Teresa. I spoke with Karen when the purchase orders, um obviously Teresa wasn't there, Karen was. And then I did go to an individual who I'm going to call an expert, a CPA that handles purchase orders for an organization that three hundred and seventy five different people can purchase things. That's incredible. And the only way they can keep track of anything and it's slower, it's more cumbersome. It's not as effective as Teresa said, but she said, we have to do it because we don't have individuals as we have at the township. There's only eight people that really are going to okay the purchase. Now, they might send, Doug might send Todd down with the hardware, but the, the, the point is we have eight managers that do very well. And their history has showed us very well. Karen has told me that we did stop purchase orders because it became such a problem in getting things purchased at the time they needed them, especially those that would continue our service to the people. She said it really slowed things down and it wasn't effective, as effective. Uh I rely on Teresa right now. Things are going correctly. We've been doing it for twenty five years. We've never had issues with people, you know, purchasing things they shouldn't be purchasing, nor have we had problems. Um, you know, going the other way also, which would be the, the legal issue. So I, I think that, I just want to throw that in. I think right now for this issue, thank you, Derek. Thank you, Teresa, for your, yes. I'm not.
I just also wanted, wanted to add that our department managers take their budgets very seriously. I get phone calls or emails constantly about, well, I'm going to go over my budget. It's like, is it a necessity? You know, costs go up sometimes with inflation and things. We can't always predict that or situations happen. And we will, in reality, we need to adjust, adjust the budget. We also look at, how's the revenue stream been for the year? Can that, can that offset it? So they're always um are questioning what accounts, making sure they want, they need to put things in the right accounts in order for us to really understand that we are, what our expenditures are.
All right, thank you.
Well, I just got one last item. I apologize. Um I do want to refer to or bring your attention to page twenty one of the, of the document I put forth. What we're talking about, at least on the expenditure limits and the bidding requirements, are all below the, the states mandated and the legal requirements of a municipality. So if you read under um about the fourth paragraph, third paragraph down, Township acknowledges that PAX one sixty seven and one sixty eight of nineteen ninety three read that any um expenditures unless the local government unit requires sealed competitive bidding, um less than, uh unless they're um greater than twenty thousand dollars, we, we cannot pay those. So the, the bidding limits that we have listed in this policy are obviously far below twenty thousand dollars. So um we're going above and beyond what the state, you know, requires. So for the residents watching this, we're not suggesting or conversing about modifying any of this policy in conflict with the state law requirements of limits. Okay?
All right. Thank you, Derek. What we're gonna do is uh, we're gonna end this discussion item now. Everybody go home, read this, digest this that came out from the managers. item now. Everybody go home, read this, digest this that came out from the managers. And obviously, the scope of this is going to be widened for the next meeting. We'll have another discussion item, Brian will put it on. And I guess we'll figure out what to name it. But it's more than, we'll just put bid process. That's good enough. And it can it can evolve from there. So thank you, everyone, for your comments. And
Can you unmute the reserve?
I'm sorry. Oh, no, we're not done yet, buddy. We got a lot more to go. Put your seatbelt on, Bill. We got a lot more. Okay. You're up, sir.
Okay. So I have been traveling for most of the month, so I did not attend the BPAC or REC meetings. I understand BPAC's meeting was canceled. So nothing to report regarding those. Oh. Now my microphone's on. Okay, so I've been traveling for the past, well, pretty much the entire month and a good part of July. Did not attend BPAC or REC. So I have nothing to report in that regard, other than that REC passed a RFP to purchase windows, which the Township Board also passed. So that's the the news from, that's the rest of the story for anybody who might get that reference. And then the only comment I have regarding some of the stuff we've talked about tonight, like the cell phone consultants, is we are pretty uniquely positioned, being a relatively small island for some really unique and cutting-edge programs. So there are a few companies and a few cities trying to do like whole city Wi-Fi through mesh networks and things like that. I know Google is one of the companies that does that through Google Fi. It might be worth something, might be something worth talking about. I'm not necessarily saying it's right for Grozeal, but it would be something to look into, especially for residents who don't use like high-speed internet, like the one gig service. Maybe they're using like a 500 megabyte or 256. We could totally service that with a mesh network and they they would save money, right? Because we would be purchasing it as 10,000 people instead of as one. So but that might be worth something we speak to the cell consultants about. And that's all I have, Mr. Supervisor.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Kevin, Treasurer's report.
The Treasurer's report for August 25, 2025. We have been busy collecting the summer Grozeal taxes, which are due September 15. Payments can be made at Township Hall, by mail, or through Grozeal branch of Public Service Credit Union. Extension of the tax due date is available for those who qualify. Summer tax deferment applications are available at the Treasurer's office and must be submitted by September 14. Approved deferments will extend the September 15 due date until February 14 of 2026. And to date, we have collected 21,000, or I'm sorry, 21% of the summer taxes. Tax distributions are made to the county and school by monthly. And thank you for paying your taxes.
All right. Trustee Mills, you're up.
First, thanks for taking the time to listen to my proposal here. I know we're going to talk about it further later on, but I do appreciate the time. We do have a zoning board meeting tomorrow. We have one appeal. That's going to be number 25-003. That's regarding the West Shores Golf Course. We also have another appeal, I'm sorry, a variance request for 22664 East River. I'll just let it go with that for now, but that would be in this boardroom tomorrow at 6:00 PM for anybody who would like to attend or tune in. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mark. William.
I can tell you, the people at our commissions are doing their job. There's not anything new and exciting to report.
Just making sure.
Can you hear, can you hear me better?
Yeah, now it's better.
The airport Commerce Park Commission is continuing on. I'm amazed. The last time I spoke with Janelle was this past week. I met her about 1:00 in the afternoon, right after lunch. She had renewed seven leases on properties at the airport. I asked her how many she had to do in a year and it's like at least 100 and I remember the number was 123. Things are under control there, I think reasonably well. Of course, the issue with the with the island athletics is ongoing and that is being attended to. I don't say they've got answers, but they're working on it. The planning commission is doing their job and we're leaving it at that. That's my report.
All right. Thank you, William. Margaret.
So I'm going to start out with communications. I just want to provide an update regarding the Communications Commission. I'm aware of concerns about this commission not being filled at this time. When I was elected, communications was and continues to be a priority for me. Equally important, however, to me is maintaining fiscal responsibility and being mindful of everyone's time commitments. When we are able to support a full commission, if we find, you know, the right team, that's something we'll look into. But at this point, we've had, we've been successfully managing, I think successfully managing communications internally. Brian Freel does a fabulous job. He continues to do so. We are going to be kicking off the Township Newsletter. All department managers and commissions are engaged in the process. And, you know, we're going to make sure that we continue to actively cascade any information that, you know, the township department managers feel that is a value add for our residents. So I would like to say I've provided the directions for residents on how to subscribe to the newsletter on our township page, but if there are any concerns, you're more than welcome to send me an email. I'll walk anybody through it. Our submission deadline for the managers was today. I think we're going to have a newsletter that will, you know, have a lot of interesting detail and that's going to go out that first week of September. The Police Commission, just want to remind everybody, Dispatcher Erd's book drive is still going on. I think this is going to be the last week. You can drop any elementary and middle school aged books that you'd like to donate to Public Safety Building. There's a box in there for those. We have a study session coming up on September 9. The Commission is focusing on preparing for Chief Carmack's retirement in January of 2026, as well as reviewing key budget pressures that affect staffing and the potential impact on residents. The Commission continues to evaluate all budgetary options to best support our community. And Tracy Bartlett is on vacation, but asked me to cover the fire department. There will be a millage renewal coming up next year for fire department. It's a renewal. Dedicated to the fire department equipment, not an increase. Keep an eye out on the fire department's social media page to see the type of life-saving equipment that the millage will continue to support and how they take great care of their equipment. They're going to have an open house on October 5 from noon to 4 to meet Fire Chief Roscoe and the firefighters and to check out the equipment. The next Fire Commission meeting is September 11 at 5. Greenway's an open space. I think that got covered, but Dump the Junk, Find a Treasure will be held on September 6 from 9 to 3, 8555 Grow Road. The Committee is working on building communications campaign to keep residents informed about all the great work being done on the trails. An Eagle Scout project is underway to look at moving the kayak launch. The Committee is continuing to address open space encroachments and their next meeting is September 2 at 7:00 PM. And I think the other items, well, so Catching Cousins Bird, that's at Grozeal Nature and Land on September 9. And they're recommending check out the new trail to open space behind the Grozeal Nature and Land Conservancy Resource Center off of Macomb. And that's it.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Excuse me, I coughed. Thank you. Hey. All right. Derek.
I'll make this very brief. Just have one item to update the community on. I was in conversations today, was updated by the county with regards to Meridian Road. They are planning on repaving Meridian Road from island to bridge. They are planning on starting next week. They have some remaining work on Fort Street. They need to wrap up at the beginning of the week. So we're looking at probably right around the the 5th or the 6th, when the 6th, when they're going to start that work. It will be a two-inch mill infill, so they'll be milling off the top surface of the road. They're probably going to be doing some base repair work if there are some faults underneath that service surface, which indications are there are some some issues on Meridian that need to be resolved on the subbase. But all that being considered, they're looking at construction probably being between four and six days worth of work. The unfortunate part is to be able to fit this work in, more than likely they will be starting early in the morning, around 5:00 AM is the recent conversation I had with the county. So good news. Unfortunately, they're going to be starting early. That's bad news, but they want to try to get the work done. And that is one of the only ways they're going to be able to get that completed. When I get an official release from the county with all this information in writing, we'll get it out to the community. Our expectation is it's going to be in the newsletter so that you can refer to that for this information. And then we'll be coordinating with Public Safety and the the school district with regards to the work taking place on that road. Normally with a mill infill, it doesn't require the road to be closed. Usually, in the areas they're working, it'll be restricted to one lane, but they'll have traffic control in those areas to allow for traffic to pass. So that is my update for this evening. That's good news. I know that that's definitely needed on that road and something the residents have been asking for for quite some time. As I've mentioned before, that project was delayed because of the load limits on the bridge. And even then, I know that they're expecting a little longer project than it would be if they weren't using reduced loads. So they are going to be doing reduced loads on the free bridge in order to ensure that there aren't any problems there, any additional wear and tear. So that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Derek, but I think you did say, I apologize if I missed this, though, but the county's is, it's on their dime.
Yes, the county.
Covering all the costs. I just want everybody to know. And
That is correct.
I just want to say thank you to the county. Derek and I have worked with them since we got in. The CEO's new group he has below him, I just want to say thank you to all the the heads of their departments for roads, for department, of public service. And we have gotten so much more done than than I anticipated. And it really is a, I just want to say thank you to them. That's all. I mean, we really, it's a symbiotic relationship and it's worked very well. And I see it continuing. So once again, thanks. And Derek, I just want to make sure that the people knew that it wasn't with the millage or the tax dollars, that Wayne County is covering that bill on that paving project. Just want to go over a couple of things. Derek hit that obviously very well. We had our first Bridge Commission meeting. And I know I talked about this before, but I'm very impressed with the four individuals that are on it, along with myself. Not impressed with myself, I'm impressed with them. And it really went well. I know I said this before, but I'm looking forward to some big things, I think, with this group, from engineering to financial backgrounds to legal background. It's going to work out very well. Also want to mention this again, this is the second time, but BPAC has taken on a task that I requested they do, to look at the ordinances for the e-bikes and scooters. We know there's issues. We have had a couple accidents so far. I'm glad somebody wasn't seriously hurt or worse. And we will be coming back and I will be updating you on that of the ordinances on what can go where, if there's speed in these ordinances and other issues. But we got to make it as safe as we can for the people on these bike paths and on the road and for the kids that are that are driving these bikes. And I just want to say, I know Christmas is coming up. You're going to be buying these. I know you will. Please inform your kid and your child how to how to control these. These are, these go up to 39, 40 miles an hour. Teach them, please, the rules of the road. Make sure they're wearing helmets. All these are so important. And and once again, I say this, I know it's cliche, but, you know, children are our greatest resource and there's nothing worse than going to one that has been injured or worse. So thank you very much. That's it for my report tonight. And we have public comment if there's anybody that, anybody from the audience? Bob, come
Bob Z, Bilalwell. Derek, I saw you put this up here, but was this presented is, whose is this? This yours?
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Fantastic. I mean, you've stated here that these are proposed modifications. You're not out to revamp the whole policy. And there are things in the policy for state and legal that have to stay there, as Derek had said. But this is very good. I mean, the reason it hits me is because when I would have a general meeting and I'm going to get a presentation on a program or a procedure, first thing I wanted to know was, who has the lead? Now I know where to go to hold responsibility and get my answers. I hope that this is of value to the board when you review this. I would like to compliment you. You put some very good points in here. Very good. The other topic I'd like to talk on briefly is your cell towers. The most most valuable asset, I believe, that the township has are those cell towers. If you look at a unit of measurement, American Cell Tower is one of the leaders in the industry out there right now. And I want to present this fact. If you look at their stock, they're at 211, they're up over $30. They have increased 14% in annual value. So this, just to give us an idea, not only do these cell towers generate monies every year for public safety and centennial farms, but they also appreciate. Now, with that said, in the bids that you were explaining tonight, I understand there are a couple in there where the supplier, so to speak, wants to become a partnership or take ownership of these towers. That's a slick maneuver regarding business on their part. Sure, they'd like to come in and take part ownership of these towers. I would highly oppose that. You're going to give up control if you do that. You're going to defeat the very purpose that we have these towers for. So when you interview, becoming a partnership or giving up any ownership of these towers, I think would be a terrible, terrible decision. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. Good meeting tonight.
All right. Anybody else in the audience?
Thank you, Bob.
Greg, come on up.
Greg Carmsen, 21228 East River Road. Wanted to comment on a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to amplify the the message that Supervisor Porcelli provided that the Bridge Commission met last week. And I I watched their meeting and it really was impressive. I think the board did a fantastic job of picking the the individuals that are serving as commissioners. I think, you know, listening to their comments and their questions, it's clear that you did a really, really fine job of finding individuals who I think are going to, you know, provide good advice, oversight and advice to the board on on the bridge. On a couple other observations, watching the meeting tonight, I commend the board on on taking on some of these issues like the Clerk of and the financial planning and transparency that we've been talking about for, really for last five years in the community is a is a priority for the board to to take on. Also, facility management in bidding and and the cell towers is Bob Zalasko. Also, facility management and bidding and, and the cell towers is, is Bob Zaleska was just mentioning. These, these are topics that have been talked about over the last really five years and as, as areas that the board should address. And it's, and I'm, I'm glad to see the board is addressing them and, and, you know, it's going to take some time to, to come up with any changes in policies and procedures or ordinances or whatever you need to do to, you know, make the changes that are necessary. But I, I do applaud the board for, for starting to finally really address these issues that for years I think were, were not addressed well by previous boards. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I think we're good. Okay. William, you can give us a motion to adjourn.
I move with you, sir.
Second. All favor, aye, I'll post. Okay. Meeting ended at 9:27. Thank you.